Call the meeting to order, roll call.
Roll call, this action is taken by calling each board member's name with a board member answering present. Mr. Murray. Ms. Wilson. Ms. Higginbotham. Mr. Kazoo. And Ms. Wickler.
Present. Public comment?
This time, Ms. Wickler, during this public comment part, I want this district board member recognition month. We did have a meal prior to, but that's never enough for some of you all, so we've got to make two.
We do sound good, we're sound good.
So we have a little something for each of you all. And Kentucky School Boards Association has a certificate too, it says it's partner in lives of the students you serve and the community you are working to improve. The Kentucky School Boards Association is pleased to honor and list each of your names. And as I said, we had a meal, for those of you all that don't know it, and a good little fellowship prior to this board meeting, in between the working board meeting. And I said it then and I'll say it now, this is an awesome board, and I'm very, very humbled and proud to work with them. I talked to a lot of superintendents and we all attend a lot of meetings, and not that we don't, as I said before, not that we always agree, but we all have our hearts in the right place, and the relationships that we have, you know, we can call upon each one of us for anything with the district agency, it's a pleasure, and we do want to recognize you all during the month of January, but we recognize you and appreciate you all throughout the year. I hate we can't do the little school board stuff throughout the year that we normally do. I know Ms. Wickler mentioned that on the... The school people do some fun stuff for us, every school we appreciate in my, everything, tours of the schools.
Brenda Nader.
Mr. Murray and I usually try to thank all the ladies on a school board feud at St. James Elementary School.
And you always lose.
That's not how I would do it, but it's fun. But we do appreciate you all and all that you do for social support for our school district.
And I asked the kids one time in family feud questions, you know, what do school board members do, and they said eat.
Because every time with our meat.
We had to agree. Okay, adoption of the agenda?
The meeting agenda is from out of your review, if there are no corrections or amendments, I recommend that the agenda be approved as presented. Okay, Mr. Murray. Ms. Wilson. Ms. Higginbotham. Mr. Kazoo. And Ms. Wickler.
Yes. Election of the board chair.
At the first regular meeting in January, following the election of board members, the board shall elect a chairman and a vice chairman. The terms of office for chair and vice chair are two years, and so we've had a board election, the board members have been sworn in, take office again this month, and so just by our board policy in reference to the statute two, at this meeting, it's an organizational meeting, so you all need to again elect a board chair and a vice chair. The first order of business would be the board chair.
To nominate Sheila Wickler.
Okay, are there any other nominations? Okay, hearing no other nominations, then we will call for a vote. Mr. Murray. Ms. Wilson. Ms. Higginbotham. Mr. Kazoo. And Ms. Wickler. And Ms. Wickler is now chair of the year.
Election of the vice chair.
Okay, again, this is the same procedure for a vice chair, served for two years immediately following this election. So nominations for a vice chair. Any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations? Vote for Mr. Richard Kazoo, Mr. Daryl Murray. Ms. Wilson. Ms. Higginbotham. Mr. Kazoo. And Ms. Sheila Wickler.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Okay, Russell County Education Association Certified Employee Recognition, Brittany Mural.
Unfortunately, Ms. Brittany is not feeling well this evening, couldn't be with us, but I've got some stuff I just want to mention to us. Ms. Brittany, of course, teaches seventh, eighth grade collaborative math, special education teacher, of course, at Russell County Middle School. She's taught four years. She's taught all four of her first, her four years, she started off with this at the middle school, and during her first year there, she also worked in the social studies and collaborative teacher there in special education. She has a bachelor's degree from Eastern Kentucky University, graduated in May of 2017. And Ms. Brittany said what she likes best about teaching, and I want to have her hear my quote, "The best part about teaching is being able to work with the students. I love building relationships with the students and watching them learn and grow throughout the year." That's a key part that she's noted there, is the relationships. For some of her hobbies and activities, in addition to teaching, she coaches the Russell County Middle School academic team along with Holly Pierce. She loves the coaching, and they do an excellent job for the middle school. She's been blessed, she says, with some of the most amazing students over the past four years. In her free time, she says she enjoys traveling and spending time with family and friends, and loves going out to eat and trying new restaurants. And her favorite quote, she says, "I'm really not a quote person, so I can't say that I have a favorite quote. However, I do live by the personal standard to treat everyone with kindness." So we appreciate Ms. Brittany and the work that she does there at Russell County Middle School for us. And Ms. Rhonda Kimbler said she would make certain that she got her check with the Russell County Education Association. Congratulations to this month's certified employee, Ms. Brittany Mural.
Okay, consent agenda items.
We have the previous meeting amendments, paying the bills, construction funds reports, school activity fund reports, financial reports, treasurer's monthly report for December 2020, and leave of absence. And I will present the treasurer's report, Ms. Carnes is out of town at a meeting. Russell County Board of Education Treasurer's Monthly Report, month of December 2020. Balance on hand at the beginning of the month, $6,332,018.87. Total of all receipts for the month, $3,011,711.28. Total of all receipts and beginning balance, $9,343,730.15. Balance at the close of the month, cash in bank, $6,125,240.40. Fund balances, general fund, Fund One, $7,337,347.99. Special projects, Fund Two, negative $1,094,470.58. District Activity Fund Twenty-One, $3,784.90. Capital Outlay Fund Three Ten, $135,392. FSPK Building Fund Three Twenty, $683,384.45. Construction Fund Three Sixty, negative $944,721.96. Dead Service Fund Four Hundred Zero, Food Service Fund Fifty-One, $863.90. Fiduciary Fund, Fund Seven Thousand, $3,627.70. Total cash in bank of all funds, $6,125,240.40. And were signed by Ms. Carnes as the board treasurer. Just some notes here, again, typical with Fund Two, we have some huge disbursements, reimbursements coming in for the funds that we've already spent for title programs and special ed. And on the construction fund, Three Sixty, working with them, with the state on the reimbursements with that, and that's going and ready to submit the reimbursements for the construction funds that we've already spent, and then they will work toward paying us back, or paying us towards the $5.7 million grant that we have. So both of those funds will be waiting on reimbursements from the state that are currently reflected negative balances. Keith, don't worry, food service is still in the black. It'll come on there for next time, because this closed December. This is for December. We have two employees that have requested leave of absences because of some concerns of work schedule and coming back to school and things like now, so they wanted, they had requested Ms. Tara Edwards and Ms. Heather Wilson an unpaid leave of absence right now from work. Tara's at Jamestown, and Tara is preschool at Russell Springs. Yes, yes, both of them. They're both unpaid, so interns terminate and everything like that, but it saves their, it saves the job. Not the specific job necessarily, but a job in the summer capacity. So if there are no changes or amendments, I recommend approval of the consent agenda items. Mr. Murray. Ms. Wilson. Ms. Higginbotham. Mr. Kazoo. And Ms. Wickler.
Yes. Consider reemployment of superintendent, current contract expires June the 30th, 2021. Consider a motion to extend superintendent Michael Ford for your contract beginning July the 1st, 2021, June the 30th, 2025, and authorize board chair and board attorney to negotiate the new contract. If approved, we'll have February 22, 2021, school board meeting. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Can you vote?
Mr. Murray. Ms. Wilson. Ms. Higginbotham. Mr. Kazoo. Ms. Wickler.
Yes.
Thank you all, I appreciate that, I'm compliments.
Sats survey proposal, Russell County Middle School renovation, addition, and paving project.
Okay, this is exciting, because this is kind of getting real for our work at the middle school and our high school, including the paving project. So the Russell County Middle School, you know, we've got maybe some additions to do, we will explore putting in geothermal for energy savings, instead of having, you know, obviously we're going to get rid of the window units. And then we want to, obviously, as we do part of this work, we want to pave this entire campus. We all know how, what for shape that's in. So Mr. Larry McGowan and I have met with Doug Gooch, Mr. Gooch has, and this has actually cost, doesn't cost as much as it normally does, because he's done so much work at this district, he already has so much on file with ADE Engineering. But we met with him, and they have the proposed Russell County Middle School renovation addition and the paving project for Russell County High School, Russell County Middle School campuses. The topographic survey is $9,180. The breakdown of the cost included that's on page three of the proposal. And again, Mr. Larry McGowan and I met with Doug on January 15th to discuss the scope of work, to talk about where the pavement is. You know, Doug's really experienced with stuff like this, so where the pavement is really, really, you know, deteriorating really badly, you know, he said, you know, we don't just throw down this pavement without kind of exploring why, you know, can we do better with irrigation or the drainage, and all those things like that. So he and Larry, we all had a really good discussion regarding that. And again, Doug has done work for our school district for a long, long time. He'll have a great report to present back to the board. You see the areas that he's got highlighted here on our map, and we'll have it all the way from the field line of the trees all the way to 127, the whole area. And again, the scope of the breakdown is provided in that. So I certainly recommend the site survey from proposal from ADE to accept as presented. And they will work in tandem with Kevin Shear and then with Sherman Carter-Barnett.
It certainly needs it.
Mr. Murray. Ms. Wilson. Ms. Higginbotham. Mr. Kazoo. And Ms. Wickler.
Yes. 2021, 2022 school schedule calendar.
The Russell County School District Calendar Committee, as noted last month, we've met. Mrs. Damer led that for us, and he's always does a great job. The draft was presented to you at the first reading at the December 21st, 2020 meeting, the school board meeting, because we have to have a public reading of it, and then comes back again at a subsequent meeting. Prior to adopting the school calendar, the local board of education shall hear for discussion the school district calendar committee's recommendation and the recommendation of the superintendent at a meeting of the local board of education. Then during a subsequent meeting of the local board of education, the local board shall adopt a school calendar for the upcoming school year that establishes the opening, closing dates of the school term, beginning and ending dates of each school month, student attendance days and days at which schools shall be dismissed. Local board may schedule days for breaks in the school calendar and shall not be counted as part of the minimum school term. So this has not made any revisions made to this since, that we presented to you all in December. Note the, you know, there's additional days off that are not counted as the paid days, and you'll see those as no school or that is noted as a holiday on page two. And then the other one is the little grid that notes every instructional day, including, you know, makeup days or that could be considered the makeup days, professional development days, holidays, instructional planning days, and all that. So May 26, 2020 is the closing day and the opening day for students. We'll be here before you know it, August 18th for teachers and students. So as Ms. Brittany said, if you miss, you're eleven months from now, it's Christmas. Seriously, we've already went through a month. So August will be here before we know it, so this is the proposed calendar to start the new school year off with. Mr. Murray. Ms. Wilson. Ms. Higginbotham. Mr. Kazoo. And Ms. Wickler.
Yes. All these meetings were virtual, Miss Roderick was on that committee also. Okay, local planning committee for district facilities plan.
We got an extension because of COVID for the facilities plan, but it's due this summer to the state board. But before that, we have to develop a local planning committee, and then the local planning committee has a facilities plan that will be presented to the local board, to you all for approval, before it goes to the state board for approval. So each of these people have agreed to serve in their capacity. I just want to attach to your board, we had the makeup. We have four or more schools, so we had to have one superintendent, I'm a non-moting member on that. Four parents, four teachers, four building administrators, a district facilities director, one central office staff, three committee members, one board member, and then the local building rezoning official, Mr. Tim Hopwell, has agreed to serve with this before. So myself, Mr. Scott Thomas as district facilities director, Chris Bell as central office staff, Tim Hopwell, Russell County Property Value Administrator, Richard Kazoo, Russell County Board of Education member, Kevin Shear, Stephen Hill, and Lisa McDonald, all serving, are willing to serve in Russell County as community leaders. Wayne Ackerman, principal, Russell County Middle School, Travis Miller, teacher, Russell County Middle School, Diane Lincolnship, principal, Jamesville Elementary School, Taylor Crew, teacher, Jamesville Elementary School, Matthew Luttrell, parent, Jamesville Elementary School, Roy Coffey, parent, Russell County High School, Barry Bowlin, teacher, Russell County High School, Anthony Darnell, assistant principal, Russell County High School, C.N. Hammond, teacher, Salem Elementary School, Chris McQuarrie, parent, Salem Elementary School, Jamie Shear, assistant principal, Russell Springs Elementary School, and Whitney Myron, parent, Russell Springs Elementary School. So upon your all's approval, this has to be sent to the state before we can start having meetings. And the planning committee meetings are always open to the public and everything, but this will be the group that will actually vote on the plan to present to you all for that. So I recommend the Russell County School Facilities Planning Committee be approved as presented, pending Kentucky Department of Education approval. Mr. Murray. Ms. Wilson. Ms. Higginbotham. Mr. Kazoo. And Ms. Wickler.
Yes.
So Russell County Schools currently pay certified staff for hourly rate of work at $20 an hour for extended teaching service. So this is after-school services, this would be teaching in summer school, any of those extended type things. So the rate has remained unchanged for over 20 years. I know that was, I used to teach after school myself, and that rate was that way when I taught it. Some of my superintendent friends, I had, that were on a text chain together, I'd text all of them. Only one district had a rate lower than ours, and they were talking about changing theirs. So I'm recommending that we increase that rate to $25 an hour, and this is for the folks, again, they've already taught, worked during the day, or could be a sub-teacher that is coming in working after school. But the current board-approved extra-service salary schedule that you all previously approved, notice the $20 per hour, and that's attached for your review. So if we increase this for fiscal year '21, and I can only imagine it would be included in subsequent years, that the extra-service salary schedule be amended to increase the certified staff pay for hourly work from $20 to $25 an hour. We are, and I'll talk about it a little bit later in superintendent's report, but we've really been working hard on planning after school and summer school to really provide a lot of services for our students, and we certainly won't be able to compensate and keep our teachers happy and agreeable to do that, and compensate them fairly for their time. So for an amount that's been well over 20 years, I think it's time, $5 or more an hour for that, we'll bring it in line along with what our districts around us pay for after-school services.
Now I work after school, and it's, it is a job. It is a job. Kids have been there all day, and they don't want to settle down to doing their homework first thing. But $20 an hour, it's, it means we raised, we want to have workers. Is there a second?
Mr. Kazoo. Okay, Mr. Murray. Ms. Wilson. Ms. Higginbotham. Mr. Kazoo. And Ms. Wickler.
Yes. English language teacher, job description, position.
Okay, so really, really excited about this continuing for our approval. But with the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, or the SRR Two, or what we refer to as the stimulus funds for school districts, we have the opportunity to hire an additional teacher for our English language program. We currently only have one certified teacher for the entire district for the English as a Second Language, that has the English as a Second Language endorsement, and two instructional assistants that work with that program for the entire district. So all of our students that are English language, we have one teacher and two assistants. So we have attached a revised job description for a teacher of English language. I'm recommending that we employ another English language teacher. So this job description, it's at the salary of any teacher as a regular teacher, but I recommend that be approved as presented, and another teacher be added to the LDR program. So that recommendation includes those two things, this revised job description, just to kind of bring it up today before we have, and then the authorization that you all will be given for us to post and hire another English language teacher. Ideally, we find somebody that is bilingual, it's not a requirement. And if they do not have the endorsement, this is a difficult position to find, obviously. We're not, number one, oftentimes folks are not bilingual, that's not necessary, but more than that, they don't have the endorsement of the teacher. Fortunately, we were really blessed, we've got some folks that have already kind of reached out to us, and were interested in this position. And so we're really, really excited about that, and what that could mean for our students and their families to have this, another teacher work with us, for our English language population. So this is something that's long past needed for our students, perhaps our teachers a little while too. Mr. Murray. Ms. Wilson. Ms. Higginbotham. Mr. Kazoo. And Ms. Wickler.
Yes.
Mr. Pete Anderson. I was going to stand down there, but since it's raining so hard. Okay, so, is this something?
Yeah.
So each year, our school district is required by the state to look at our nutrition, our physical activity findings for the year. Mr. Ford is supposed to submit the findings and recommendations to the state by May the 31st. The information I'm going to go over to you was put together by your schools, and it was from the Alliance of the Healthier Generation, where the schools went on there and filled out their survey and their responses. And so what I'm going to go over with you is from each of the schools, sort of a combined district level report. I will be honest with you, since the last time we met, we figured out, I think we had six weeks of school, so things have really not changed much since last year. But you all have, did you all load this report on, you all have that, Joel? I'm just going to do a quick summary. As far as the nutrition goes, we were equivalent to both the state and the national average when it comes to meeting best practices, same thing with smart snacks. We're fully meeting best practices in areas of school breakfast and lunch, recommendations. Probably encourage faculty and staff to integrate nutrition education lessons into the curriculum, promote nutrition education by modeling and encouraging healthy eating, and allow students opportunity to test taste food items. we've got that planned if we can get, get rolling here again. We did that once last year. Uh, the physical activity, uh, slightly, uh, above the state and national average items fully meeting best practices. Uh, specific assessment items indicated we're fully meeting best practices in sequential physical education curriculum, and adequate time is allotted for recess each day. Recommendations for the physical education part probably be to promote and build physical fitness programs that are established to meet the needs of the students, and provide district resources for teachers to integrate physical activity into the classroom where possible. Also, physical education, teachers at the elementary level will incorporate health and education as much as possible into their curriculum. Uh, the committee, we've met two times already this year. Uh, some other recommendations that we came up with would be to continue to work on policy language and further strengthen our district wellness policy. Also use data to promote their healthy schools assessment and district well-sat assessments to implement strategies of improvement. Then each school will implement the components of their wellness plan to achieve both nutritional and physical activity requirements. And lastly, develop strategies at each school to promote employee wellness. I think on all, each of the school surveys, uh, the employee wellness is one that we were, were needing to do some work there. So, again, these are just recommendations, and, um, we're supposed to offer time for public comment if anybody has anything they'd like to add to this about each, each of these reports. Uh, you just, yes?
Do you take an issue or look at the amount of time students have to eat lunch, so they can eat it healthily instead of just plopping it down because they've got so little time?
Well, the requirement, I think, all this, everybody's got twenty-three minutes, and pretty much on the scheduling, that's, that's pretty much where we are.
Twenty-three minutes to do what? Does that include, does that also include going to the classroom, the cafeteria, getting a meal in the cafeteria, setting?
That, that's from when they enter, that's when they enter in the cafeteria. Of course, with the pandemic, that's, that's obviously, that's giving them more time for the transition time, taking the, the food back. But I think we've got one principal here, Mr. Diana, would probably tell you that there's plenty of, plenty of time given for the students to eat. Uh, but when I was principal at Russell Springs Elementary, we, we made sure that the kids had plenty of time to eat. If we ever got, where students were going through the line, and I know all the principals are the same way, if, you know, line's getting backed up, I think everybody's gonna be reasonable there and make sure kids have time to eat. We're not gonna rush anybody out there. Any other comments? One other thing, I, I wanted to sort of fill you guys in on with our food service. Uh, in case you don't know, we're currently operating two, two programs. The C A C F P, which is the child and the no-care food program, that's for our supper meals. Then the summer food service program is our breakfast and lunch. Um, we're not doing the national school lunch program, and there's very few school districts in the state that are doing that, because these two programs allow us a little bit more flexibility. Uh, and the reimbursement rate is also a little higher. So you notice, uh, Mr. Ford gave that report a while ago, I think we're in the plus, what, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars? So,
uh, Not every one is up there.
Okay, well, we're, that didn't allow for the month of December claim. So whenever tomorrow, Mr. Ford gives you that report, always remember, we're, we're a month behind. And December was a huge, huge month for us. Um, if y'all remember, December twenty-first, when we had our big drive-through, seven-day meals, and First National was really good to us about giving us all those gift cards. That brought a lot of people out, and it helped everybody. It helped the food service program most importantly, and helped the students and the families out. So that day, there was roughly nineteen, I think nineteen-hundred and four boxes, seven-day meals that went out. So that was really good. Uh, we continue to do our deliveries on Wednesday. Our bus drivers, family resource center coordinators are helping us do that. Uh, meal pickups at three elementary schools on Wednesday. We're now doing five meals. So even though kids are coming, uh, saying everybody's coming two days, it still allows us five additional meals they can get. So that's breakfast, lunch, and supper.
But just for, that's, that's because, under these alternate programs, Saturday and Sundays included?
Yes.
See, that's why, even though they come to school, they still can get five meals a week.
The summer food service at C A C F P, they allow us to, to feed the students seven days a week. So, so we signed up for all of those, and had, had approval for it. Um, the reimbursements, you know, I just want you all to know that obviously they're not where they usually are. Mr. Ford, we have twenty-eight hundred students, I think, this year.
Twenty-nine fifty.
So, so roughly, you know, if there are twenty-nine hundred students, and, and we're usually, when the school's going full force, we're feeding eighty-five percent of them. I think when we finished up before the pandemic, lunch was eighty-seven percent, breakfast was seventy-eight percent. So really good participation. So when you think about that number, twenty-nine hundred students and eighty-five percent of them are eating, uh, really good, really, it really helps the food service program. So now we have gone to, before, before we started in person, we were averaging around eleven hundred meals per day and probably two hundred deliveries, which all went out on Wednesday. So you could add that up, would equal about thirteen hundred meals a day. So this past week, I've talked to all the, the schools, uh, this past week with our A V groups, Russell Springs had two forty-five, Salem one twenty, Jamestown was one fifty-two, high school was one thirty, middle school was one ninety. So we're now at the eight hundred and forty meals a day. So you can see, that's about two hundred and sixty meals difference. So, uh, I just wanted you all to, to sort of be aware of that, uh, with our reimbursements, and to try to encourage everyone that those Wednesday meals, when they come on Wednesday, that is so important. Uh, you know, it's help, number one, it's helping the families, the students are getting the meals, but then it also helps our food service program as well. Uh, of course, we're doing supper weekend meals. That has really helped us, uh, that the supper meal definitely. Uh, and don't think we're the only district that's sort of struggling, uh, with, with, in the food service department, because all of my, uh, people that I work with throughout the other counties, some have, have already had to dip into their general funds. So we're,
We mentioned that at previous board meetings, Mr. Anderson, we've not even had to do that. But the likelihood, I mean, it does, it's a possibility, just by sheer numbers, we can't feed as many kids in this type of situation as we can, uh, in a, you know, pre-pandemic world. But regardless, um, we have talked nearly, it seems like every board and, board meeting, and I know Mr. Onion has mentioned it before too, what a fabulous job you and your staff have done throughout this whole time, uh, from the, from beginning back in March till current. And, uh, and that's very much appreciated, what you all done.
The other members of the family, I mean, the, the other kids that are,
Eighteen and under, yes, even if they're not in school.
Right.
That's right, yep.
That's fantastic.
Yep.
And, and we've had to change around a little bit here going through the winter months, and we probably have fewer staff members, um, than we've had probably in, in several years. So a lot of things to consider, but things are going well. We've been very fortunate. Uh, from our, our cafeteria faculty and staff, we've had very little sickness. So I, I hope that continues. So, but I just wanna say a shout out to these ladies. Uh, I mean, they, they get after it, and, and Wednesday is, Wednesday is a really big day now, because we're not only preparing a hot meal that's going out, we're getting all those other boxes ready to go too. So, but they, they've been doing a great job. So thank you so much.
You all do an excellent job, Mr. Anderson. Stay there.
And I commend those, those ladies that fix all this food. Tremendous.
Personnel reports. Ms. Marcia Hart retiring, she's a second grade teacher at Salem Elementary School effective February first, twenty twenty-one. Ms. Karen Hoover retiring, Russell Springs Elementary School preschool, preschool teacher effective February first, twenty twenty-one. And Michaela Bond was hired as our district mental health specialist position. You all approved that position, uh, through the December board meeting, I guess it was. And, uh, Ms. Damon had a committee, and we, we welcome Ms. Michaela. Might have her to come to a board meeting sometime just to introduce herself and kind of tell, you know, let you all know what she does, uh, for our district. But she, she was great hire, and really look forward to working with her. On to superintendent updates, I wanna provide you all, uh, let me pull it up here. On our current, um, I'm gonna read you some numbers of the number of students that we have currently positive or quarantined, and the same thing as far as goes as faculty and staff as of today. And since I've been in this meeting, with some other emails, this information has already changed. But, uh, Russell County High School, we currently have seven students quarantined, three are positive, and three positive, for a total of ten. Russell County Middle School, we have eight students quarantined, zero are positive, zero of those are positive. Jamestown, nine students are quarantined, and three students are positive. So there's twelve students impacted. Russell Springs Elementary School, we have eleven students quarantined, one student is positive, so that's twelve students impacted. Salem Elementary School currently has four, uh, students quarantined, one student, uh, that is positive, so that's five students. So for the district, as of rep, well, earlier this afternoon, we have thirty-nine students quarantined, eight students were positive, for a total of forty-seven students that are either quarantined or in isolation because they're positive. For teachers, we have one quarantined at the high school, one quarantined at the middle school. We don't have any right now at Jamestown, Russell Springs Elementary School, we have four teachers quarantined, one teacher is positive, for a total of five that's been impacted. Salem Elementary School, there's one, uh, employee quarantined, and I'm, I'm using the term teacher, this could be just an employee, I'm sorry, um, that is quarantined. So total for the district, we have seven employees that are quarantined, one that is, one that is positive. Um, we will, those of us that have signed up for it, we will receive our first vaccine on Thursday, January twenty-eighth. Um, roughly, as I talked to you last time, a little over half of our employees signed up to the vaccine. So we will be administering that actually here in the, in the lobby of the agency, starting around eleven, twelve, is not totally finalized, and then go into the afternoon hours. So, uh, teachers and stuff don't have to try to leave school and get somewhere and get back, and they can come over here and do, they'll do about six at a time. And now there's plenty of space in here, because you have to wait twenty minutes after, um, your shot. A little bit extra, a couple of medicals, having staff to wait twenty minutes instead of the fifteen, that's, that's gonna happen on, uh, Thursday. Uh, this is very, very exciting, and so well deserved. But we were recently, uh, informed, and Ms. Wicker, and myself, and Ms. Hannah England, and Ms. Suzy Stevens had a little conference call with Kent Wicker and Karen Quinn with the Wicker Quinn, um, Foundation. They have, and they were nominated and received the advocacy award from, from the Kentucky Association of Gifted Education. So we wrote that news to them over a, um, over a phone call, a group phone call, and, uh, we look forward to them receiving their plaque, and then they're going to record, um, saying a few words, and I'm gonna say a few words, and some other folks, and Ms. Wicker, and that's gonna be put into a little video, and gonna be presented, uh, virtually at the Page Conference or the Kentucky Association of Gifted Education Conference next month, which is being held virtually this year. So, again, uh, we know what Kent and Karen's, um, donation, their foundation is meant to Russell County schools, specifically to our gifted and talented program. But it's great when the state organization, the Kentucky Association of Gifted Education recognizes that as well, and gives them the advocacy award. So that's just outstanding, and we look forward to, to them receiving that, that recognition. I'm working with a group of three students with the Kentucky Youth Advocates, I just wanted to give you all an update on this. It's, uh, Mr. Trey Stevens, Ms. Olivia Pierce, and, and Ms. Lakin Sterns. Uh, all three of those names, I think, have been in, in front of board members before. I can remember when Lakin was, she's a high school student now, but you all remember her at Salem Elementary School doing four-eight speech, uh, you know, demonstration speeches. But Kentucky Youth Advocates is exactly what it is. It's a group of students that, um, take positions on policies and bills and, and advocacy for things that are impacting youth or could impact youth, and they work with, um, the Kentucky Legislature. And I was invited to serve as an adult liaison with three students, and work with the high school and picking out three students, and we actually have another meeting tomorrow. But then during advocacy week in February, um, really exciting, Olivia Pierce has been invited, and she will be doing the introduction for Lieutenant Governor Coleman at the kickoff for the advocacy week. So I think that's pretty cool, that one of our high school students has been selected to do that. So you'll probably be seeing their names and some work that they're doing some more as we go forward. Also, some real, I'll close with this part on the, uh, really exciting news for the elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund too. Again, this is what we refer to as the stimulus bill for schools. Russell County's allocation is four million, three hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars. Uh, the good part about that is, we can, we can extend that all the way through September thirtieth of twenty twenty-three, going to fiscal year at the federal, they start again in October. So we can, we have that money to spend and to think about helping our students get caught up in, in a variety of different things, all the way through September thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. So you think about after-school program, well, that's summer twenty-one, summer twenty-two, summer twenty-three. Not only after, after-school program, but we need to be able to provide transportation for these students. So we'll have money to, to provide transportation for these students. Think about our Chromebooks that we purchased with the first round of, of Caris money, uh, with the stimulus money. We'll have funds now that we can purchase, uh, additional Chromebooks for when these start, you know, by twenty twenty-three. Inevitably, after we've been using this much, there'll be time for replacement. So we're planning, and we'll present to you all, um, a plan for some of these mon, these funds as they move along. We've not got a lot of guidance from the state, really don't have any guidance. We don't have a platform to enter the budgets or anything like that for. Um, I've got another superintendent meeting, uh, I think it's next Tuesday with the state, and I, I expect some more additional guidance then. But we've just got the, got the amount and some, um, overall guidelines of what we can, what we can spend it on. If we were to not, um, if we were to be a district that didn't have bonding capacity and needed to use the money for, for instance, to help with the HVAC at Russell County Middle School, this is allowable expense. You can use it for, you know, both that type of thing, because they recognize the importance of ventilation. But it's four million, three hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars that will be there. Doesn't have to be all spent until September, uh, end of September of twenty twenty-three. So I'm thankful that we have time to plan that and use that strategically for after-school, summer school intervention, folks that can come in and work with kids that haven't been to school, or, or behind, or whatever. And so really, really excited and appreciative of those funds. Uh, you know, it's not, it's not free range, certainly. We have to use it within the parameters. We will not be paying, you know, a lot bill with it. Uh, but there's a lot of things that we can use, uh, that will be great for our, for our students and families.
When you think about the students who've been left behind because of the virtual learning, you know, and that, that's just wonderful.
It'd be a great opportunity to provide some extra services for them. We're starting our plans, we'll have, uh, some after-school work going real soon.
Can you have any idea about when we might possibly go to school?
We can't until we can, the state removes the part about socially distancing. We cannot, you know, we can't bring kids back and, by any stretch, and have them in the rooms the way they are currently. So that was under the guidance.
I don't understand how some districts operate.
Scott County is, I don't know how they're making that work.
Who is?
Scott County.
Look, Macey County is too.
Now, we may, we may look at our high school first, because, you know, this is the reason we had to go hybrid for elementary, because they can't fit the classrooms. But our high school, Mr. Vossage, and I were talking after the last principal meeting, with their numbers, if, if X amount of kids say, I'm not coming back, period, four days or not, and they have, that's gonna be our next school that will go four days a week, as long as it doesn't put a classroom over to where they cannot socially distance. So if the rooms are big enough, and, and there's enough kids that come in person without being too crowded, then you can, you can bring them back.
Are, is some of the other districts just not going by the six, what is?
I can't speak to that. Or maybe they have a lot of staying virtual. They maybe have a lot of kids staying virtual.
Take account, look back for one week. But they, one week's all they want, that's three weeks.
They're on hybrid schedule, I think, they'll take account, aren't they?
They, they one week, and they drop it right now.
Hybrid, hybrid schedule, what's that?
I can, I can, I don't know.
I have to see how the teachers are teaching well. It's, it's hard on them to teach I have to see how the teachers are teaching well, it's, it's hard on them to teach virtual, and...
It's a combination, some of them are doing live with the students in classroom and the ones that are home. Some of them are using recorded lessons for the students that are home, and then being an opportunity to, you know, back and forth with them. But we're looking at some other two, some students that are extremely far behind, you know, getting somebody and having a spot on campus. Mrs. Dameron and I were talking about this today, having a spot on campus to bring them in, and to give them an opportunity to get caught up, because, I'll just be blunt, some of our kids that we're most concerned about that are not performing, they're also the ones that are not returning in person as well. And there's not a, the school has no authority to tell a family that you can no, you can no longer remain virtual. You know, even if they're, if they're doing poorly. Pardon? But we're going to, some options, but we've got, and we're not like any other districts, there's certainly a population of students that our principals, all of us are extremely concerned about. Yeah, absolutely. That's all the updates that I have.
Is it turn of the tide? Oh, is, are there any other comments?
I don't know if you all know it, but Chris Ford and I were in the K S B A, they were.
That's right.
Famous people.
And we didn't look beautiful, so, didn't you?
Mr. Mason Claus?
We, no, just Mr. Claus and I had to guess.
Yeah, I had, I had a hat on, that's all I had.
We had a ball, Mr. Claus.
A disgrace to the profession.
It was a good thing.
I might most need your...
Okay. Second? All the paper?
All the paper.
Thank you all.